Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 22, 2024 council meeting. I'll ask the city clerk to do a roll call, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Mayor Potem Landrum?
Here.
And Mayor Wickson?
Here. And if I could please ask our harbor supervisor, Becca Kelly, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Becca.
Thank you, Becca. I don't think I've seen this room this quiet in a long time.
No, I'm sorry.
I would just like to share this evening that you probably are noticing Councilmember Ford slid over one. This evening, Councilmember Edwards will not be with us, and also, our city manager is out for two weeks, and our acting city manager is Mr. Qualick this evening, so we will be addressing him and questions with him. With that, I will... We have no closed session, so Mr. Newmeyer is off the hook. We had nothing to report out because we had no meeting, and I'm going to start with Mayor and Councilmember Reports announcements, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Landrum.
I... Let's see. I went... I met with Public Works and the city manager of... And the NEP, the National Estuary Program, to talk about their use of glyphosate roundup on the sandspit. And I... It was really interesting conversation, I think, that we had, and we'll hear more about it coming up soon, so stay tuned for that. Also, I went to... I was so curious. I went to the Haslow grand opening of the Anderson Inn in San Luis, because, you know, that's just been there. I used to know someone that lived there, so I was really curious to see what that remodel, that 10 million-plus remodel looked like. And so, there were... There was a good turnout there, and I only... I snuck into one of the rooms before they did a tour or anything, just so I could see it, but it looked really nice. I went to a roundtable with, oh, gosh, many different PhDs from, like, Stanford, and very, very well-educated group talking about offshore wind, and that was in Carmel, put on by Cassie, the California Arts and Sciences Institute, I think is the acronym. I met with a group of hoteliers and some of the board of Visit Morro Bay, and we had a really great conversation about what some of their concerns are and, you know, how the city could partner with them. And I met with Deana, the new CEO of the Chamber, so it's been a busy two weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
Well, I too got to meet with Deana. I think that's going to be a following through here across the dais. It was just great to get to meet her, hear about her background, take the questions she had, and it turned out I had been doing some cleaning at home and came across a box of all kinds of information from, like, 2022, 2023, that were things that are now coming to pass, and so it was nice to be able to hand those off to her. Let's see. I attended the Chamber breakfast where our Assemblywoman Dawn Addis spoke, and that was really moving to hear her talk about all the things she is involved in, different from when she started. It has just grown and grown and grown, the different committees, and it's just so great to see her and to, you know, have it be our hometown girl, really doing well, so that was great. And that's it. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying out some new classes, so I'm a little discombobulated. I just got them, so I need them now, apparently. Okay, so I have a couple of things to talk about. The first one is Councilmember Barton, myself, our two candidates that are on the ballot. All four of us were part of the Blueberry Muffin Contest at the Marine Family Fun Day, and that was really fun. The winners of the contest were Rhapsody in View, the hotel over on the north side of town. And so that was a lot of fun, and walking around and just visiting all the different booths, and always such a great family-friendly event. And then I attended the Public Works Advisory Board meeting. There was a presentation from the Morro Bay Estuary Program about the removal of the ice plant, and I saw Councilmember Landrum walk in to hear that as well. And along with that, they also had, just so you know what they talked about, they reviewed and commented on the fiscal year 2024 fourth quarter water reclamation facility quarterly report. They also heard a report on the 2024 pavement rehabilitation project presentation, and I got to hear the presentation from PEI Corporation again on how they determine PCI levels and all that fun stuff. So I really, truly feel like I am more of an expert now than I've ever been, but it's always very educational, and there's always something new I take away from it every time I hear it. And then also, what else do we have here? I also met with Deana, the CEO of the Chamber. It was great to have a one-on-one with her. And then lastly, I think it's fitting that we had Becca Kelly do the flag salute, because I am going to talk about an upcoming event. The USCG requires visual distress signals, marine flares, to be carried onboard all boats greater than 16 feet. These flares have an expiration date and contain toxic metals and pollutants. The Morro Bay Harbor Department received a grant to host a single-day collection event for all expired marine flares. If you come this Sunday to safely dispose of your expired, single-use marine flares and receive a free... You can receive a free reusable electronic distress signal. And this event, as you can see on the screen there, will take place October 27 from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m., and it is located at 1196 Front Street, Morro Bay, California. And there's also some flyers in the back of the room. If you're here physically, you can go grab a flyer, and Becca Kelly is also here if you have any more questions about it as well. She's here physically to talk about it if you need. And that is all that I have.
Thank you. I had a handful of events. I also attended the Maritime Family Fun Day activities, the Chamber Mixer and Rock the Waterfront. It was a great three-day weekend and beautiful weather in Morro Bay. It's been just awesome out here. I had the opportunity to go to Delmar Bike Day. There was a lot of our students from here biking and walking, and our Morro Bay Police Motorcycle Team escorted them. It was great to see everybody and be a part of that little event in the morning. The Subcommittee of myself and Councilmember Landrum had an offshore wind update with Golden State Wind. Got an opportunity to see where they are in their surveys and chat with them for about an hour, what their plans are coming up, and also, we had an offshore wind Subcommittee meeting with Mr. Singwald, who will be reporting out on that shortly. I was invited to speak at AAUW, and I really appreciate all the local women. They do a great job with their garden tours, which the funds from that support science camps for students at Los Osos Middle School. I, along with candidates Mr. LaFaye and Mr. Echols, attended the Morro Bay Active Seniors Dinner. We were invited there to speak also last Friday and had an opportunity to chat with everyone, so that was nice. I think with the update, somebody will be sharing our two events coming up this weekend, the Witches and Warlock Paddle, as well as the Downtown Trick or Treat. And probably the highlight of my weekend was that I got to attend two weddings, and back-to-back, in this beautiful weather out here, and it was just such a nice thing to do. It was great. It was just happy moments, so that's it. With that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Qualick.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates from staff. First, we'd like to announce that the city manager, Yvonne Kimball, who, as you mentioned, is absent right now, has selected an assistant to the city manager for that vacancy, and that individual will start on November 18. Her name is Whitney Gordon, and she has a bachelor's degree in communications from Cal State Sacramento. She has a background in marketing and communications and is currently an employee of Adventist Health and Tenant Health Central Coast. She also has some background in doing work in DC, where she assisted in the passage of some chickenpox vaccine legislation. For another announcement, we are going into the state water shutdown next week, starting on Monday. So every November, the state water system shuts down for maintenance reasons, and that will begin on Monday, October 28. That means that we will be fully on our groundwater for our water supply, and that groundwater is then treated through our reverse osmosis system on Atascadero Road and then treated with disinfection. And so that means that customers, residents, and visitors may experience a mild scent of chlorine as part of their water, and if it's really high, if it's a really high odor, then they can just let the water run for a minute or so, and it's expected to last two weeks. Also wanted to announce that our paving project is going to start on Monday, October 28, so we're very excited about that. And the first month or so of that project is going to involve crack seals, digouts, monument preservation, and manhole lowering, and we do have a schedule online on our website that shows what the dates are in terms of start and stop, as well as maps that show which streets will receive pavement treatment. Another announcement, the Wharf received a fourth award, this time from the Engineering News Record, which is a reputable publication in the engineering and the building world, and it received an award for the water and environment category. And so it is now proudly posted up at the Water Resources Center. And then finally, I'd like to invite the community to come out to Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard for the Trick and Treat event that we have on Saturday from 2:30 to 5:30, and the trolley will be out, and Janine will be out there giving away some things for that event as well. And that concludes my update.
Can I ask, Mayor, could I ask Mr. Qualick a question? Does that award come with a cash prize?
Unfortunately not.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to the Subcommittee Reports, and Mr. Singwald?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Airline Singwald, Community Development Director. So I met with the Offshore Wind Subcommittee yesterday, October 21. During the meeting, I was able to summarize my involvement in a state Assembly Select Committee meeting on last Friday, October 18. As I presented to the Subcommittee on Monday, the meeting was chaired by Assemblymember Addis and also included Assemblymembers Jim Wood of Humboldt and Greg Hart of Santa Barbara. I was on the Tribal and Local Community Engagement Panel, speaking to the Select Subcommittee or the Select Committee. I spoke as a planning professional, not speaking on behalf of the City Council. I used my presentation time as an opportunity to stress the importance of maximizing public involvement in the consolidated coastal development permit process for operation and maintenance infrastructure facilities if an application is submitted to the Coastal Commission. I stressed the need for additional funding for local capacity building, the importance of having reimbursement agreements with offshore wind developers to recover staff, time, and cost involved in the permitting of public engagement and local capacity building efforts. And finally, I emphasized the importance of finding operation and maintenance infrastructure consistent with the city's local coastal program and waterfront master plan, again, should the Coastal Commission process a consolidated CDP application for infrastructure. At the Subcommittee meeting yesterday, I also announced that I attended a kickoff meeting with Mot McDonald, which is a consultant that the county has hired to prepare a operation and maintenance infrastructure feasibility study for San Luis Bay as well as City of Morro Bay. So we held a kickoff meeting to start that process, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. And anything with the Downtown Design District? We're on hold on that.
So for Downtown Design District, I'm in the process of working with the Subcommittee to plan and schedule that public forum to wrap up the work effort.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Qualick, anything with the water reclamation, just other than what you shared?
Thank you, Mayor. No Subcommittee Report for that Subcommittee?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we have nothing with Vistra?
No Subcommittee Reports, updates provided.
Thank you. Thank you for the updates. And Chief, I see part of the Morro Bay Fire Team here, and I'm looking at them in some different colored shirts. Maybe you could... I see a whole line of them back there.
Absolutely. So the fire department is wearing pink this month to recognize breast cancer awareness.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for joining us. You're very colorful. With that, I'd like to invite our Chamber CEO up, Deana, thank you, to share the Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Update.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate you inviting me to speak this evening, distinguished guests and city department heads. Can you hear me? There. So this is part of the economic development expectations of the Chamber to present on a quarterly basis our economic development and what we're doing to engage with the business community and the community to provide economic development. So on our agenda is the August-through-September update. You were last updated in August, and I wanted to provide you some input from what I have done on the economic development. So who is the Chamber? We're a nonprofit 501(c)(6) organization, independent nonprofit corporation, 12 members, 12 board members, three full-time staff members. We have a Government Affairs Committee, which I'm particularly proud of. Not every Chamber has that, and that's vital to provide that connection between government and the business community, so that we're heard and we understand what's happening now and what's going to be coming towards in the future. We have eight-member Ambassador Committee as well, which welcomes new businesses into the community, connects like-minded businesses together, and kind of helps with that peer-to-peer conversation. We also have 307 members in the community. Part of our strategic plan, our strategic imperatives, I should say, are ensure that the Chamber is a trusted, respected, and sustainable organization within our community, that we connect Chamber members to one another and to vital resources for their business, influence policy to support the business community and economic growth. We're a catalyst for business growth. We want to make sure that our businesses not only survive, but that they thrive and they have a plan to grow within this community. We also support employers' needs for skilled workforce. Our board is ever-changing, and it will be changing in the new year. We currently have 12 board members, with our newest is Lauren Ledinger of the Catslow Organization. She just recently joined us, took over as an interim board member. We have three distinguished new board members that'll be coming on, Gary Bourgeon of Mechanics Bank, Jim Duffy of Tenover Studios, and Denise Lowe of the South Bay Women's Network. Transitioning out sadly will be Stephen Peck, Dean Sullivan, and Gloria Zion. So you'll look to see them in the new year. I'm not going to go through this line by line, but it basically reviews everything that the Chamber does within the community regarding our website, our Breakfast on the Bay that one of you mentioned that you were fortunate to attend, some of the events that we have, that you've attended, the Mixers, another Councilmember mentioned that, which is another great connective tool within the community for business-to-business and the community to businesses as well. We have different events like the Shop Sip and Stroll. We'll have two of those events coming up in November to engage our businesses and our community and our tourists to try out each one of our businesses from our Downtown District to our Embarcadero. We share information. We have a strong following on Facebook and Instagram. These numbers go over how many people go into our Facebook site and go into our Instagram page and also our website to learn more about the Chamber and more about what's going on in our community with our local businesses. Now, to get more specific around the KPIs of the Economic Development Plan, I thought it was important to kind of outline what the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce does in the way of economic development within its own entity and why I think it's a good idea to partner with our city on economic development. We do that with our businesses. If you have a like-minded business or a business in the community that can be benefited by meeting, partnering with another business, partnering with the city on economic development makes perfect sense with the Chamber of Commerce. We advocate for pro-business policies and regulations at the local level by representing interests of our members to create a favorable business environment. We network businesses, connecting, again, businesses and professionals through events that we put on, seminars, and networking opportunities. We support entrepreneurs. The Chamber of Commerce also has a foundation where we provide scholarships to high school students and to students that are looking to enter college. And that's something that we've had just now for about a year and a half now, and that's doing quite well. We're promoting tourism and events by our local events that we have. We're looking at 2025 and expanding some of the events. We have to be very careful with that because we have a limited staff and we have to rely on some volunteers, but it certainly brings a lot of tourism and a lot of business, a lot of customers to our local businesses. So we want to be very strategic on the type of events that we choose and that we are respectful of what our businesses want and what our community wants as well. Workforce development, we collaborate with educational institutions, workforce development agencies to help our businesses if they're looking for a workforce. We just had a local business in this community that was looking for a specific type of workforce, and we reached out to our local workforce development agency and connected them so that they can help them in finding the workers that they're looking for. Business retention and expansion, that is vital to this community. We love Morro Bay and what it's all about, but we won't exist if we don't support our businesses, large and small, and not only, again, not in survival, but to continue and expand and bring in new businesses and providing what we've discussed before, the ability for our workforce to live in this community as well is something that we advocate for also as a Chamber. So this is where the print gets a little bit small. Business attraction, part of our workforce, our initiative with this is finding vacancies, lease opportunities, or properties that are for sale for businesses to come into and take advantage of within the community. I use two different resources on that. I use LoopNet and the Reach website as well. We also are going to be providing a small business survey to not only Chamber members, but the entire business community, and the resource we're using is the third-party vendor that the study uses for business licenses. We filtered that out for short-term vacation rentals, delinquent licenses. We filtered out some of those that don't actually have a doorway to go into, but we still do include if they have an online site. So legitimate businesses that are... that the Chamber and that the city would be interacting with. With that, we identified about 560 business licenses, and as I mentioned earlier, the Chamber has 307 members, so that's a pretty good ratio and reflection of our business community. This business survey is going to go out. I have shared it with some of the individuals, department heads in the city, to make sure that the questions and inquiries are relevant to what you're looking for in the economic development survey. So we'll implement that in January and have the results back to you by your Q1 of 2025 report. Local and regional partners, we work with the Reach Practitioners Network. I've met with them twice. Again, this doesn't count October. I haven't given that report yet. Cal Poly Local Economic Development Council, Karen Tillman, Workforce Development Board, Don Bollinger, and Visit Morro Bay. City staff meetings, I've developed a relationship with just about all of your department heads within the city to make sure that we are aligned in what the city is trying to achieve in each one of the departments, from Community Development to Public Works, Parks and Recreation, the CFO, I work with her as well. I don't know that I forgot, and you all, to kind of get input on what your plan is, what you think we need to communicate to the business community, and then I also share what the business community would like from you and how we can work together to communicate and make sure that the business community is well-informed and knowledgeable and that they are heard on both sides, and the city is heard as well. Breakfast on the Bay continues to be a good source to drive the community and the business community together and deliver a unified message with engaging speakers. We always have some of our Chamber members who will speak to what's happening in their business, and the community has an opportunity for some questions as well for the speakers. Chamber hours of operation have expanded exponentially. We're a business that's open like any other, from 8:00 to 5:00. You can come in and see us at any time. We get significant inquiries just from individuals who come into our community. And remember when we had a visitor's center, and we're happy to help them. Visit Morro Bay is in our office as well, and they also assist with that, and we're also always there for our business community. You also mentioned that you all were at the 60th anniversary of Morro Bay. The Chamber was involved in assisting, making sure that that was a successful event. These are some of our events that we have coming up in November and December. We have the Shop Sip and Stroll that I mentioned. We have the Breakfast on the Bay that's going to be coming up, and we also have a movie at our local theater. And with that, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Deana. I appreciate that. I look forward to the continued opportunity for you to share these updates. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on, this evening, we have the pleasure of providing a proclamation from the City of Morro Bay recognizing National Apprenticeship Week as of November 17 through the 23rd of 2024. I'm going to read that proclamation and invite some of our local representatives up in a few minutes. So whereas, the Workforce Development Board of San Luis Obispo County, Central Coast... of San Luis Obispo County, Central Coast Construction Trades, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 639, and Pipe Trades UA Local 403 have partnered to expand apprenticeship opportunities and head of household jobs in the construction trades in the San Luis Obispo County. And whereas the advancement and well-being of the City of Morro Bay, San Luis Obispo County, State of California, and United States of America depends upon continued development of a skilled and trained workforce in the building and construction trades. And whereas an ever-growing number of job creators and career seekers are discovering the benefits of apprenticeships, unique learn while you earn model. And whereas the City of Morro Bay recognizes that robust apprenticeship programs provide tangible value to both job creators and apprentices with the potential to increase productivity, improve diversity and inclusion, and reduce recruitment and training costs while providing a pathway to prosperous, high-wage, middle-class careers for job seekers. And whereas National Apprenticeship Week, which is celebrating its 10th anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role apprenticeships provide in creating qualified and highly skilled workforce in the building and construction trades in the City of Morro Bay, the County of San Luis Obispo, and across the nation. And whereas in recognition of National Apprenticeship Week, the Workforce Development Board of San Luis Obispo County, the Central Coast Construction Trades, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 639, and Pipe Trade UA Local 403 are hosting an Apprenticeship Forum and Job Fair on Thursday, October 24th, from noon to 3:00 at the IBW Hall located at 6363 Edna Road in San Luis Obispo. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Morro Bay City Council recognizes National Apprenticeship Week from November 17th through the 23rd of 2024 in the City of Morro Bay. And I would like to invite Cory Black, Mark Simonin, and Don Bullinger up for a few words to share with us. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Don Bullinger. I'm the Director of the Workforce Development Board for San Luis Obispo County. Thank you for mentioning our event. I'll have flyers in the back about the Construction Trades Apprenticeship Forum that we're hosting this Thursday at Mark and the IBW's construction hall, Union Hall in San Luis Obispo. We'll be serving lunch there. They'll be at a forum of apprentices talking about how apprenticeship opportunities have changed their lives as well as some live demonstrations from the various construction trades, giving examples of the work that they're doing. We've done outreach to our schools and to Questa College, and we look forward to a lot of students and young adults attending that event as well. From the Workforce Development Board, I want to share a couple points with you about why apprenticeship is important and why construction jobs are important in our community. Apprenticeship, as you mentioned, provides an earn-and-learn opportunity for folks to have a viable career pathway into middle-wage and head of household jobs in San Luis Obispo County. This means that they're hired on at the beginning of their training. They're paid wages that support their livelihood as they move along that career path, and it results in us having a skilled workforce with individuals who can impact their lives and walk away from their training and enter their careers without tuition or debt costs tagging along. Construction jobs are really important in San Luis Obispo County because we have a job quality issue in San Luis Obispo County. And by that, I mean that the majority of the jobs in our county are low-wage, low-skill jobs that don't provide a livable income for individuals in our community to thrive here. On the contrary to that, 77% of construction jobs pay more above the county's median wage. We currently have 50% of the workers in our county are employed in lower-wage, low-skill jobs, often working multiple jobs to make ends meet. The median wage of local construction jobs exceeds the county's living wage by 38%. These are the types of jobs that we need to grow in our community to develop those career pathways in the middle class and allow folks to stay here and support the individuals that support the employers that the Chambers were talking about as well. So I wanted to just take that opportunity to share with you the importance about growing these jobs, the work that we're doing through our Slow Cal Careers programs. We provide no-cost training opportunities to anyone in the community who wants to look at pre-apprenticeship and explore pathways into the construction trades. You can go to slocalcareers.com and get connected with our programs and services there. Again, I'll leave the flyers for the event this Thursday in the back of the room. You can also find them at slaworkforce.com where you'll find information about the Workforce Development Board and all of our programs as well. Do you want to share anything about apprenticeship?
Just real quick, we sure just appreciate the recognition. We appreciate Morro Bay stepping up with this proclamation. We look forward to, we're looking into a deficit of construction workers in the skilled trades in the near future. It's important, there's a lot of young people in Morro Bay that are really suited for this style of work. We're known for our work in the energy sector. We had the largest utility-scale solar in our jurisdiction. We had the largest, well, the only nuclear power plant in the state of California is in our, in our county. And a lot of those opportunities are tailor-made for our young folks that want to stay and live in our area. So it's important that we recognize these apprenticeships. There are opportunities, and we do see a lot of these young people right here in Morro Bay High School. You guys have a wonderful ag program. You have a lot of good shop classes there. You have a state-of-the-art automotive department. The kids that do the welding, they're the ones that we're really looking for. We are putting on this forum towards the end of this week. It's Thursday. We've been by, we talked to the career tech educators here, the counselors at Morro Bay High. They, we're anticipating they're going to show up. We do have a little bit of a conflict with Questa College. The Questa College Promise Program is the same day, so we're not going to have the population that we've had in the last couple of years. But we're still, we're open for business. We take applications year-round. That's with all the crafts. And we encourage the local community to look out and keep an eye out for these apprenticeships. And we do appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming. And I know the last few years, you've been up at the Midstate Fair also, and I think that's been a great presence. So thank you. Oh, picture? Yes, thank you, Cory. You'll give us just one minute. They've asked for a picture. Thank you, everyone. With that, we're going to move on to public comment. I do have some speaker slips to start off with. I'm going to call you two or three at a time, and then public comment will be open for everyone else. I'd like to just take an opportunity as we're approaching election in a few weeks to remind everybody that we do have a civility policy. And I would just ask that comments that you share are addressed to the council. Thank you. With that, Linda Winters, followed by Gary Johnson, followed by David Yo. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Winters, 30-year resident in the St. Mobile Home Park. I want to say hello to the mayor, the council, the staff, the chiefs, and the guys in pink in the back. That's wonderful. The magic number for tonight is 15. I'll explain later. Last Wednesday, I received a wonderful phone call from my oldest granddaughter, Brianna, asking if she and her fella could come over to visit here to Morro Bay. And I said, oh, sure, when? And she said, maybe tomorrow. And I went, oh, thanks, okay, sure, that's fine. So I asked what she wanted to do, and she said, fish and chips at Giovanni's and visiting the Embarcadero, and then Friday to Montagna d'Oro and Sylvester's. And I said, well, that's pretty easy. We can do that. So we ate lunch. When they arrived, we went and ate lunch and started at Tidlin's Park and walked the entire harbor walkway. I haven't been there for a very long time. And kudos to all of the businesses that have new and improved properties. Hands-down winner that made us all smile, the giant orange octopus for kids in a play yard, kids of all ages play yard. My granddaughter, who is now 34, has been coming here since she was four years old. She kept saying how happy she was that the bay looked so healthy. The eel grass has made a great recovery. We saw tons of otters and lots of birds, witnessed two feeding frenzies, and answered lots of questions from visitors when my granddaughter told everybody that her nana was a local. So I got to answer all the questions. Why am I sharing this? Because after two days of seeing how beautiful our city at ground level is and hearing my granddaughter saying, "I hope this town never changes so I can bring my kids here to see nature at its best." My fondest desire for the city, make the improvements to our infrastructure so we can all survive, stay healthy, and enjoy our little city as the tourist destination it's been for years. That's all I have to say for now. Oh, one more thing. Don't forget to vote, and the magic number is 15. That's the day, how many days it is till after the election. And I'll see you all on November 12th. But if you happen to be down at the Downtown Halloween Gala, I will be manning the booth for the Lions Club. Thank you.
Good evening, Morro Bay. The City Council and the mayor, and especially our police department and our fire department for keeping us safe. This is summation I'm going to give. It's about batteries. And it's going to be a summation for the last year. I'm going to summarize a couple paragraphs. And I want to thank Barry Brennan for his reporting on Measure A and the committee for working so hard to get the signatures on the ballot for A24. In conclusion, I say that Barry Brennan and the committee as reported, the main goal is to pass Measure Yes on A24 to put the power in the Morro Bay citizens and the city. The last several years, I have been reporting to the Morro Bay citizens, Bay News, City Council, and anybody that might want to listen to, listen to me, the pros and cons of the technical literature on the ion lithium battery storage facilities from around the world and with our own country. My opinion, my conclusion of my research, I found that and reported that there are too many negatives to build a lithium-ion battery storage facility on the property designated in Morro Bay. In California, recent years, over this last year, we've had four lithium battery storage facilities in California, especially down in San Diego area. All four have been, all four have failed. They're all owned by different companies, have caught citizens to have to evacuate from their community because of the possibility of the toxic material that may be in the air from the problem that was caught on fire. Okay, here it is. Now is the time to vote November 5th. I encourage Morro Bay citizens to vote yes on A24 to keep the zoning as is and let the citizens and the city to decide what we want to improve in Morro Bay, not people from the federal government and from Sacramento and other entities that want to come into our Morro Bay. If you vote no on 24, that will encourage Vesta to be able to build 174 battery storage facilities and have the possibility of having, there won't be potential problems there. 65% of all facilities that go in do have problems. And to, so a fair possibility to evacuate Morro Bay citizens from the high school, tourists, and the list goes on. And that's it. Thank you for listening, and I will say no more. And we'll see what happens after November 5th. Maybe I can just keep my mouth shut. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wixom, council, staff. I've come here, my name is David Yo. I live in Morro Bay. I have come here tonight to thank you very, very much. For the best part of this year, I have made appearances before you, and you have greeted me and treated me very well. I appreciate that. I've had my say. I'm not a public speaker. I'm not very good at doing this. But you have been very gentle with me, and I appreciate it. I would like to also apologize for any outbursts I may have had where I may have been brash or unkind or even vile. I have come to the decision that I am not a public speaker. I do not have the capability to address you in the mature adult fashion that I should with proper information to make an argument. Most, anything I could say, you already know. And I think I know who agrees and who doesn't. So I would like to apologize. I hope to be a contributing member of the community. I did attend the breakfast, Breakfast by the Bay this past week. I was not well-received, but I was able to ask a question of Mayor, of Don Addus. And by the time I spoke, I was, I was kind of hyped up, and it didn't come out well. And I am embarrassed for myself and for my contribution to Morro Bay. And although, well, I cannot apologize to Ms. Addus, but I apologize to you. So I will not stop being active, but I think I may just let this, this portion of my activities rest. So those of you who do return after the election, yeah, anyway, I guess that's about it. I could say a whole lot of other things. There are so many topics. There's so many topics, but I'll stop while I'm ahead. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Yo. Excuse me. I have two more speaker slips. Jane Von Kill and Steve Page. Jane?
Good evening, mayor and council. I seem to wear myself out walking from the Parks and Rec, which is actually separate things now, and the work department. So I did go in today and ask about a broom for our tennis court. Oh, Jane Von K, 2755 Hemlock Avenue. And so she said, go back to the other one and get it. So we get brooms. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, and sometimes somebody walks off with them. What this little three minutes about is the fact that I have to congratulate the city works for putting the new fencing up at Delmar Monte Park, Monte Tennis Court. It was a very good job, and they did a wonderful, wonderful job of it. Except people complained about the height of one side, so they took it down and made it a little less high and put it somewhere else. So my other thing is I've been saying for the last couple of years, and somebody else agrees with me in government, that we need to have it resurfaced. Because if you look at the lines, the back line where you're serving from, all the top part of the surface is off. It should look red or pink or whatever, like the other one. But somebody at tennis today, because we have play day today, said that they didn't need it. And I don't agree. And I've always asked them if they would set up a thing to And I've always asked them if they would set up a thing to where they can say how much it would cost to have a different sort of footing for it. It has a, I played in Montecito with a friend one time, and they have a, it's sort of got a more resilient effect. And people here, most of us are seniors. And I know we used to give a lot more money to the city in dollars because we pay a dollar every time we play, but we had more people playing. And it's sort of been taken over by that big P, which I don't want to use the word, and they seem to get their resurface when they want, but I understand they pay for a lot of it. Well, I'm sorry, our group doesn't like that, but it's being used Monday through Friday to, ours is Play Day from Tuesday to Friday that I run. And yes, I don't play as well as I did, of course not. Who does when they're nearly 80 and they've broken their femur and a few other things in the last year and a half? So, but I would like to see it surfaced with something a little more resilient so that we can keep the people going. And we are lucky because there's two young boys that are excellent, they hit the ball much better than I would, and their parents are, you know, working with them and training them up. And they've really, we only have one court in Morro Bay, that's all. I mean, the other one is okay if you want to be in the rough riding, you know, sort of what you call it, indoor/outdoor carpet. It doesn't really work, and I believe it was said to the council that it wouldn't work when it was put in. So I've talked to Kirk last times, and he said you can put, you know, sand in and stuff, but it doesn't last. And so I would appreciate if somebody could, you know, do something about resurfacing our court.
Thank you.
Please. Thank you.
After Mr. Page, I have no more speaker slips. Public comment will be open.
Good evening, council members. Steve Page, resident. The Wind Best Project is a magical CO2 thinking project. The whole DEIR is based on hiding CO2 Scope 3 analysis and pretending it creates CO2 savings. For example, Tesla cars' Scope 1 and 2 emissions only added up to 610,000 metric tons of CO2. When Scope 3 was added, Tesla now admits 337 million metric tons of CO2 for its cars. How does Tesla ignore the true CO2 savings on Megapacks? It does so by failing to disclose the Scope 3 carbon studies for Megapack. Visra also must sign a non-disclosure agreement, just like any other person that buys the Megapack. Complicated formulas on battery degradation favor Tesla. 15-year warranty limited by less than nameplate rating use for the first 10 years. No CO2 footprint computed for fire damage. No CO2 footprint computed for battery recycling. No CO2 footprint for battery transportation. But most of all, it's the short life cycle of the lithium batteries that is ignored. Tesla's life cycle handicap is ignored. If you're comparing a 15-year life cycle, as in the Tesla warranty, with a 60-year life cycle, life cycle of a hydro storage system, here's a system like you would see in Ireland. Comparison: The pumped hydro using green energy, 11 grams CO2 per kilowatt hour. This is the total Scope 3 footprint with CO2 accorded to the original construction costs for pumped hydro. Lithium batteries use 300 grams of CO2 per kilowatt hour, but you have to multiply this by four to compare it to the life cycle of pumped hydro, which makes it 1,200 grams of CO2 per kilowatt hour over 60 years. Without the Scope 3 litmus test, this is a pretend project. The planning department needs to abandon magical CO2 thinking now and demand a Scope 3 analysis. There are no, they are not good stewards of the property unless they do this. Therefore, we want control of the PG&E property land use, and I say yes on 24A. Thank you. And that's it.
Anyone for public comment on items not on the agenda?
My parents had no idea that somebody's life could be valuable and fulfilling with the ability to be productive, and all I asked of them was that my scars would fade. I knew full well that any irreparable change would only be of value if I could forget that change ever even happened. My scars will never vanish completely, but now I'm glad for that. They stand as proof that I used to be something else, something more. I spent so long learning to live in fear, in fear of the unknown, of the different of myself. Now I fear the known. In the words of my favorite anarchist author, Frank Herbert, "Fear is the mind killer. Fear is the little death that brings total obliteration." I have been at war my whole life, whether I knew it or not. At every turn, I am told to be afraid, afraid of drugs, criminals, immigrants, queers, blacks, Muslims, the wealthy, the poor. Fear consumes us. I consume my fear. I turn it to rage. I fear the other end of eternity, but far more do I fear meeting my end without ever having lived. While my desperation to live may lead to thoughtlessness, I never allow myself to force my will on others. Whether out of love or hate, I will never make the mistake of making other people's decisions for them. I may not have convinced anybody to change their worldview over the course of the last year, but at least I managed to show up every time and actually speak. It doesn't matter if anything I said even made sense. I am standing here in a room full of what passes for America's ruling class. Our government is supposed to be for all, but only a fraction of Morro Bay's demographics are represented here. If nothing else, for one year, I tainted this altar of money and whiteness with reminders of the pain and suffering that make your lives possible. I remind you that the piper must be paid, and that is a price paid by the children. Mothers mine, when we meet again in hell, I'm going to be righteously pissed that you left me problems that are so big I run myself ragged and still know I will never be anything other than an ass. I am willing to give up what doesn't serve my larger purpose if, when we who are born to pain are gone, the children will know only the woes of life and not those left behind by the ones that refuse to pay.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Wixom. There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back. I'm closing public comment. Thank you all for this evening, and I am going to move on to the consent agenda. We have items 7A through 7E, and I'm going to open public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Good evening, Betty Winholz. I'd like to speak to the item that has to do with what I call outsourcing our transportation. I did talk about it at your September meeting. I expanded on that with my comment to you in writing. I am concerned that we are doing this. I'm wondering if you're willing to hold that contract and go out for an RFP to see if we're actually getting the best deal that we can from RTA. I felt that it was a bit unfair that MTV didn't get an opportunity to participate or any other company that might give us a chance. I listed my concerns about going out to the county. I find that we, the loss of control of our vehicles means that this is an absolute decision, and you won't be able to come back from it. I believe that the levels of service will be dictated by the county more so than by us, even though there's the appearance of negotiation. And I, I find that we've continued to move full-service responsibilities of our government out to other places, and we haven't brought any of those back. So that concerns me in the direction that, that the town is going. So for me, I would like at least to consider going out for an RFP and seeing if there's a better deal or if there's some competition that can happen between RTA and the MTV. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on items on the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Wixom. There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to council. Mr. Qualick, just real quickly, that contract's coming back to us, correct? And the negotiations about that'll look the first of the year sometime?
Thank you, mayor. That's correct. City staff will be bringing back a proposed contract with RTA at, in the early part of next calendar year for council's consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone want to pull any items on the consent agenda? To my left, to my right. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, I mean consent agenda.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We have one item this evening. No public hearings, one business item that we will move into, that is consideration of amending the advisory board handbook and bylaws to reduce the public works advisory board and harbor advisory board membership from seven to five members. This was an item that was brought through staff and myself, as well as had been asked for by council member Ford, who is not listed on here, but certainly want to include her comments and input on this item. With this, I will turn it over for a few minutes to the city clerk to just give us a little background, I think, on the advisory board makeup and why we're addressing it right now.
Thank you, mayor. It's nearing that time of year where we begin a recruitment to fill the annual vacancies that are upcoming December, or excuse me, January 31st. We typically run that recruitment in November, December of each year, and then hold interviews in, in January. Given the number of positions, kind of larger than normal, the number of positions that are available, it particularly on PWA, where there are four vacancies coming up, and the harbor advisory board, it seemed like an opportunity to have a discussion about potentially moving toward having all advisory bodies be, have five members. And so we wanted to, you know, just make the council aware of that opportunity. We did look back at a little bit of the history, just for perspective. The harbor advisory board was created in 79, as, you know, I was able to find the records as a five-member board, with all five members required to be Morro Bay residents. It did increase to six members, went back to five members. They called it a harbor commission for a short time, and then ultimately in 87, it, the makeup that it currently has with at least four voting residents, a Morro Bay commercial fisherman representative, along with some alternates, and a Los Osos representative. And it's been that since then. PWA was seven members originally, was reduced to five, and then it was increased back to seven around the time that the water reclamation facility project became very active. Another reason maybe for, you know, talking about this is that we generally have three to five resignations each year on our advisory boards for varying reasons, you know, personal reasons, professional reasons, relocations. And each time that occurs, we, you know, there's a staff effort to conduct a recruitment again, do the advertising, the interviews, and the onboarding. So we just wanted to bring that forward and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you very much for that. I think that in the conversations about that, and thank you for doing that research, it has ebbed and flowed, and as was shared, there's four seats coming up, or four openings coming up of seats in January for the public works advisory board. We just recruited this past six months, probably, two new members of that advisory board because we were short. So the challenge really has been, as Ms. Swanson was sharing, the ability to keep the seats filled. It's a four-year term on all these advisory boards, which I think everyone going into it understands that commitment, but things in our lives all change, and, and people for different reasons need to resign. So as we're potentially getting ready to recruit more members, we've just onboarded two members in the last six months, which is advertising, recruiting, onboarding, and then about the time you get them up to speed, you have four more openings again. We had one of our members of the planning commission, Mr. Ngrafi, was serving on two boards for a few years here until this last go-around because we couldn't get candidates. So this has been an ongoing challenge, and in part, we looked at this aligning with the other advisory boards, as well as the council, that there's five members each. And in the conversation that we had, we realized that we have a very robust public comment and public engagement. So the idea of changing this to five and aligning with the other advisory boards, I do not feel is going to hamper any of that participation by any means, but allow us to hopefully keep the seats full. Councilmember Ford, I know this was something you, you had brought up as well, so I don't want to just exclude you from the.
No, I, I think you said it so beautifully. I just want to say ditto, really. But yeah, I have to say, over the last couple of years, witnessing that same thing that you just described, and then being the liaison for the public works advisory board meeting and attending those meetings, and yeah, when there's seven people, I, there's, there's so many people to give a comment on every single thing, and it seems like, it just makes sense that like five is like the magic number. You get quite a bit of input, you get a variety of people from all different backgrounds to provide input to our staff and also for us to hear. But I agree with you as well, we have public comment as, as another, you know, alternative as well, if you want to give input on any agenda items. But I think that just for, for staffing, for recruitment time, all of those efforts, I think that it's just time that we consider going to the five across the board and make life easier on everyone.
And, and in some cases, it's back to what it originally was. From doing some of the research, we found that, that the public works advisory, when it did go back to seven, was during the beginning of the water reclamation facility project. And so our, our understanding from looking back on that was that it had gone to seven just so that they could have those extra subcommittees and things. So that is our recommendation. Mr. Qualick, is there anything you want to add to this as the acting city manager this evening?
Thank you, mayor. I'll just add that, you know, as liaison of one of the boards that does have seven members, I can share that it's just as if we were part of any group that had to make a decision, the more members of the group there are, the longer that decision takes. And with five members rather than seven, the public would still have the opportunity to provide input. And so staff is certainly supportive of the proposal.
Thank you. Question, members from council? Councilmember Burton, any questions?
No questions. I just agree with the, the way that we're kind of moving on this. I think it's a good idea to, to use the five for a group. It's a strong group, but also maybe a little more nimble, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Landham?
I just wonder if it will, as, as we were talking about it, this won't affect a quorum or anything like that?
No.
No. Because some of them don't have, PWA, sometimes I've been to, and there's not that many. There's a lot of vacant people out, and so that's, that's just my only thought.
And, and that is a challenge, but that would be the same argument I think you would make with council, having members missing or public, or excuse me, planning. having members missing or public, or excuse me, Planning Commission that had two commissioners missing, and you still have a quorum, but it does make it challenging to make decisions. And with the Harbor Advisory Board, we did look at, you know, the value of, of how those seats are staggered and, and the representation that they provide for representing all the different factions of the harbor interests, including a member-at-large, as well as marine interest, fishing interest, commercial. The, the Morro Bay commercial fisher seat is an alternate also, and not wanting to eliminate the maritime position as listed in the agenda item, it would be done over two years, so we maintain that seat. And then the second year, we would address just replacing the member-at-large. So I think that that keeps that intact and, and provides the level of value I think the community wants from the diverse group, so.
I do have one question, just for like transparency reasons. Does anyone on staff, or maybe Mayor, you know, with your longevity, is there a reason why specifically, and I, I have my own thoughts on it, but is there a reason why the HAB, sorry, the Harbor Advisory Board has specific people named, or I should say genre, or areas that they're from, you know, whether they be a marine business, or, you know, that sort of thing, versus other boards that are, there isn't really necessarily a requirement other than living in Morro Bay, or, you know, is there a reason why? Is it because of, like, do we know why that was specified on that board only?
The city clerk has the information on that as she was digging it out. And, and I would share that there has been, the goal is to find someone from that, but it isn't necessarily going to be, or has not necessarily been a requirement when there hasn't been somebody to fill that position. I think the same is that we don't spell it out with Planning Commission or Public Works Advisory Board, CFAC, but we're looking for people who have some financial background or some public work background in some other entity. You look at the Public Works Advisory Board, and you have members-at-large and our general public, but you also have members from Caltrans or retired engineers, and, and the Planning Commission has an architect and a planner and different things that bring value to that, even though they're not specifically spelled out. You're less apt, I think, to pick a member-at-large with something that's that challenging. But I, I think Ms. Swanson has the answer to that.
I don't know that I have the answer, but I can say that it goes back to the very beginning that they wanted to, that Harbor Advisory Board to represent the, you know, very differ, different perspectives of the marine-oriented business, the commercial fishing industry, sports fishing. Fish processing at the time was also one of those, and a, a water-related business. So I think they just wanted a broad spectrum of, of input and ideas.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate this feedback because we did have a comment from an individual who, you know, was kind of pointed out, like, we just have members-at-large on all of our boards. Like, why wouldn't we just make them, you know, more of those and not eliminate any of those? And so I think it's important to hear, you know, why specifically, or at least an attempt of why, knowing why that board kind of spells out, even though you mentioned it's not, you know, an absolute requirement. It's just a preference, it sounds like, to have somebody from each of those categories.
I think traditionally, that's been the way that it's been since its inception, is that it had those designated seats since its inception. And, you know, you, I would certainly think we would always want someone from a, whether master leaseholder or a subtenant because of the enterprise fund and that, as well as our commercial fishing industry. So it, it does make sense, but there is, the flexibility of some of the positions, when we looked back, were filled by just members-at-large.
Okay. That's great background. I appreciate that clarification.
And I appreciate, thank you to Ms. Swanson for, she's been doing a lot of digging way back.
I do appreciate that greatly.
Especially with the Harbor Advisory Board going way back, so, thank you. If there are no questions, I'm going to open public comment on this item.
Hi, my name's Cal Myers. I happen to be on the Harbor Advisory Board currently. I'm actually the chair. Saw this on the agenda. Thanks for putting it at the end, city clerk. I have a couple of opinions. I don't want to say indifferent, but I think either five or seven will work. The concern I had reading the agenda item was the rationale for changing it, which was a recruitment issue. If we have a recruitment issue, that's a bigger problem than whether it's five or seven. You know, if we had a recruitment issue and that was it, you know, we may have not only had five, three members on the city council if it wasn't for the two gentlemen here actually applying. So are we kicking the can down the road because we have a recruitment issue? Is that the problem that needs to be fixed, or is the problem five versus seven? There's compelling reasons either, either way. I like the five. It's less cats to herd. But the seven, on the experience I have, especially with the ad hoc committees, it allows you to actually have three members on that. It's a lot more productive than two, at least in my opinion. So that's been my experience so far. But I think the real, the real question is, is why are we having a recruitment issue? Not only for the advisory board, but just for the elections in general. I think that's sort of a bigger, bigger problem. But like I say, either, either one will work for the HAB, in my opinion. I say, I enjoy having the seven people. It gets a little rankish on the dais, but, and there's, like I said, the other reason is there may be a consistency issue. You know, we talked, the council talked recently about changing some of the facilities, and it would be nice to have that consistency. But like I say, I am concerned about making the decision just because of recruitment. Because then you can, you know, maybe it's five, and now it's three next, you know, two years from now. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Betty Winholtz, I'd like to follow up on the previous speaker. In terms of talking about recruitment and, and numbers, in the old days, when I was on council, it was every committee had seven people on it, and only the Planning Commission had five. And it stayed that way pretty much. And then when there was a change in council, they started going down to the five. And I agree, it doesn't really matter whether it's five or seven, as long as you're consistent. So I appreciate this change, that they're all going to be the same size. But I, I don't have a problem either if they could all be seven or all be five. And the recruitment issue, I think, does come down to, to this. And maybe someone can correct me, but I, I don't know. I believe that a change happened in people wanting and staying on committees when there was a change in how the city council addressed the committees. It used to be that we, the council, would say to the committees, "Okay, you guys know stuff that's going on in the community. You know about these particular areas. You need to advise us. What is it that you think is important?" A shift happened, you know, ten or more years ago, and it was, it became the opposite, that the council is going to tell the committees, "Okay, this is what you have the right to talk about." Therefore, as a public member on a committee, I feel like, why do I need to be there? You know, you already know what you want. You're kind of dictating the way things are going to go. You don't really want to hear my opinion. And so I saw it as a more creative approach to say to a committee, "Okay, you guys are in charge," and I'll use my commission committee as an example, Wrexham Park. "What is it that you know, that you hear in the community that's important?" Not from the council saying to you, "Okay, this is what we want in our Parks and Rec." I think, I think it's the ground up that's more effective and gets people involved than when you try to boss people from the top down. And so I think that's been part of the recruitment issue, because I don't remember there being an issue when we had seven people. We always had more than enough applicants. So I think it's your attitude in terms of what you want from us. And, and hopefully that will shift and that, the new people. And I think your method for reducing the sizes was, was clever as well. I think that's a good way, allow it to be by retention rather than let people go. So thank you for that.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Wixom. We have one raised hand in the queue. Judy Lynn, I would allow you to talk. Okay, you may speak.
Good evening, council. I, I like the idea of five. I think that's wonderful. But I mainly wanted to just say how wonderful we are to have Dana as part of our city staff. Her ability to always maintain a professional outlook is, is just, it goes beyond measure. And, and she is fabulous about digging up old records. And I appreciate her, and I think that everyone is proud to have her on our staff. Thank you so much, Dana. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Judy. Are there any more raised hands in the queue, AGP?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Yes, thank you, Ms. Swanson, for your due diligence on this. Addressing the comments that were shared with us, I, I agree with many of the things that were said by the two speakers. I think that there's partnerships that need to be continued to, to grow and to work. We've had so many changes, I think, in the last several years with the COVID and the Zoom, and then people who were able to participate on those advisory boards remotely. And then when that went away, they went away because they wanted to travel or be other places, which they were afforded when we were under that process. I think that when you talk about the recruitment issue, I would ask any of you, do you belong to service clubs anywhere? Because it's the same issue. I think the challenge i- is finding people. When you look at our service clubs in our community, the Lions, the Quota, the Kiwanis, the Lionesses, the Eagles, you know, the youngest member in those groups is, you know, 50 years old, and people aren't committing. It's a four-year commitment. They're not joining service clubs like they used to. And, and the younger families, I think, are spending a lot of time with their volunteer efforts with youth programs and things their kids are in. So it, it does create, it's like there's this shortage. You try and recruit, and I feel this council over the last two years has been true to its word for the, the opportunity to begin re- restart joint meetings again with advisory bodies and the council, which had not been happening for a long time, whether it was a policy decision from past councils or again, just the remoteness of how we conducted meetings. You know, this past year, we've met with the Planning Commission, we've met with Public Works. Who else did we meet with? CFAC and CFAC. And we still have more work to do. It takes a lot for, you know, those added meetings for staff, but I think a lot of good things and a lot of collaboration come out of those meetings. And as, as, you know, you shared, Ms. Winholtz, that, that's how we can get from the bottom up, is having those opportunities and those meetings. The whole idea of the group called advisory is to advise us and help us with that. So I appreciate those comments, and I think we all take them to heart. I know that the two new council members are both here taking notes of all this too and will be liaisons for these advisory boards. So I hope you'll look to them for, for things that, you know, you find as challenges and concerns and, and suggestions, you know, how we can turn this around a bit. So with that, is there any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't have any more que, well, I guess it's a slight question, but really, it's, I, I take the comments to heart. I appreciate the public comment that has been brought forward, and I appreciate your comments, Mayor Wixom. One of the things that I do want to get, I do want to point out, though, is that when I'm sitting there listening, and I'm talking specifically about Public Works Advisory Board because I'm attending every one of those and only a few of the other ones here and there. But I can say that I feel as though there's always an ask for future agenda items that is requested of our board members, if they want to bring forward, want to see something, want, want to provide input on something. There is always that offer at the end of each of their meetings. So there is an opportunity to provide their ideas for input. And this is not saying, you know, that it couldn't be better. I'm just saying that there is opportunities for our board members to provide their, what it is that they want to see. And also, I do appreciate our, our directors that are the liaisons in each of those meetings who do truly take that feedback from each of those members and do incorporate it into the report so that we, as council members, truly do get a better idea of what is needed. And I feel like those reports are more complete because of our advisory boards. And so I just want to give a shout-out to our advisory board members and all the work that you do and all the volunteer hours that you put into these meetings. And yes, we can always do better.
Anyone else?
I will just, I will just say, whatever we choose to do today is always, we can, if we don't like it, we can always change it back.
Well, I would hope we wouldn't be moving forward on that pretense.
Just, just for people to remember that it doesn't, you know, if, if we at some point, it sounds like we're moving in the direction of, of keeping them all the same five-member boards. And if that, if it's determined at some point that that isn't working, we can always.
Readdress it.
Readdress it, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I agree with that. With that, I will make a motion to approve Agenda Item 9A and ask for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think I want to drag the meeting out a little bit longer because I will lose my bet otherwise. Any future agenda items? No. I'd like to remind everyone that we have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. And in December, our meeting will be, for the most part, ceremonial. There will be a brief business aspect of it. And that's on December 10th, Tuesday. And it will be, no closed session. We will be having our ceremonial transitions at four o'clock from four to five, and then the new council will take seat at 5:30. With that, thank you, everyone, and I hope you're all out for the Witches and Warlock paddle and the downtown festivities this weekend. Thank you. We are adjourned.